Call the committee as a whole to order. There is an agenda there in front of you. Can I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda? Councillors Randawa and Adi, all in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. Single item on the agenda is a presentation from Trigon with regards to wetland function compensation plan. Come on forward. Whoever's coming forward, have a seat there. Ensure the microphone is on and then introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Tobin Siekel and I'm supporting Trigon on their project development efforts.
I'm Carl Malachek. I'm a project manager on the engineering team at Trigon.
Excellent. It's all yours.
Okay. Do we have a spacebar? Arrow key's not working.
It's good.
No. Okay. So I see a few familiar faces in here, mostly new faces. So if I haven't had the chance to introduce myself or meet you before, I'm Carl Malachek. I'm a project manager on the engineering team here at Trigon. Been in Prince Rupert and calling that home for a few years, a few years now. So anyway, so as many of you know, Trigon is a bulk. We export bulk and liquid through our facility. We were formed in 1981 to, as you know, government of Canada recognized the opportunity to export coal off the Pacific Northwest. In 2018, the government divested formerly Ridley terminals into what we are today as Trigon, which includes a bit of, you know, a few different private equity groups and then also Lacqualeams and Mantle Catler are part owners. We are the largest terminal in Prince Rupert by volume. We love to hang our hat on that accolade. Lots of competition out there and we've got 150 employees. I'd say 145 of which probably live here in our residence of Prince Rupert. We're also very active in the community. Kristen Barry, who's sitting behind me, is the tip of the spear on that front, working in various community initiatives. And we've put roughly $325,000 into the community so far in 2020 or 2025. So, you know, happy to be a member of the community here in Prince Rupert. Now, if anyone here doesn't know what wetland function compensation is, that's the kind of long and short of the plan is if you disturb something or take away something over here, you need to add value elsewhere. So at Trigon, we're beginning to look at diversifying into different products and away from coal. So we have begun to develop a greenfield site on our, adjacent to our existing operations site. So as part of that, we did remove some wetlands and we're here today to talk about our plan and our proposal for the way that we're going to offset that work that's been done today. And with that, I'll pass it on to Tobin.
Thanks, Carl. That was a really good explanation of what we're up to there. So what's interesting with wetland function compensation plans is that what we're in our jurisdiction, like a federal jurisdiction, PRPA, is that you actually need to look at not just replacing the wetland itself, but the concept of function is what's critical here. And that function can actually be harvesting opportunities. It can be recreational opportunities, educational opportunities, all sorts of things beyond simply just recreating a wetland. So anyone that's worked in, you know, with Environment Climate Change Canada is more familiar probably with one for one or two for one like replacement. It's a very different thing with PRPA. It aligns with the federal policy on wetland function compensation. And that's why you'll see a very interesting and diversified plan, which we're trying to bring forward here. So we looked quite literally all over. We've been engaging with the nations on this for quite some time. And before that, we sat on a technical advisory group with PRPA on their effort to move forward a wetland function compensation plan. What we heard time and time again is nobody wanted to see a project that was built down in Abbotsford to replace, or in Saskatchewan or something like that, to replace wetland that was lost here. So the idea really was to try and find a site very well, close to Prince Rupert, that would benefit the area and, you know, re-instate these ecological functions that were lost. So we looked all over this region and what we landed on, it's small, but I just wanted a contact map here. But in that purple, at the corner of Ridley Island Road and Highway 16, we found a parcel of land that was really, really interesting and compelling for a number of reasons. Now, I'm not sure how many people, you guys all know Oliver Lake itself. I know it's a great recreational spot, well-used in the winter and the summertime. In this area, there's old boardwalks running through there that are sort of dilapidated, a little bit unsafe right now, but they do allow you to access into the wetland. And it's an absolutely amazing spot. They don't go very far right now, but we've made the effort to kind of go a little bit further, map it out and have a pretty good look at it. And it's really, it's a really neat piece of land. What's also interesting about it is that the uplands above it, to the west of it, actually have some stunning examples of old growth forest. And there's also CMT's archaeological sites, culturally modified trees, things like that, that are in this parcel that we found. And as a whole, they work really well from an ecological perspective. And then they also bring forward the educational opportunities that are associated. So the area we're looking at is around 28 hectares in total. It's a mixed land ownership. So 81% of what we're looking at is provincial crown land, that's the purple. And then the green box there is city-owned fee simple land, which is 5.4 hectares or 19%. You guys are all very familiar, I'm sure, with the existing infrastructure already. At Oliver Lake, there's a parking lot, picnic tables, fire rings, outhouse, all sorts of stuff. I believe the city collects garbage from the area at this time and obviously maintains the outhouse and things like that. Yeah, next slide. So what we're looking at in this area, pardon me, is five-pronged approach here. So this conservation of sensitive wetlands. And that idea there is that you actually layer on protections in that land so that it can't be developed in the future for another purpose, industrial use or something of the sort. That really sets your, it's kind of like that's the gel of your mold that's going to hold everything in place and all the other work that you're doing there to improve it. So you're looking at, we're looking at construction of a public indigenous use trail. That's the light pink that goes there. And it sort of runs from Oliver Lake parking lot over into the BC Hydro line right away and then runs all the way south and comes out of the corner of Ridley Island Road and Highway 16. It's an absolutely stunning area. There's a kind of a destination point near the bottom of the lowlands towards the south end. Maybe you can just show the curve with the cursor right there where that photo's taken with these amazing dwarf trees that have, you know, these things are hundreds of years old. They're stunning. But the whole area is really wetland, except for that upper left quadrant, which is the old growth forest itself, even further, sorry, outside of the trail. Yeah, the top left there, there we go, thanks. And so the trail itself is designed to kind of like move us through that landscape, but also selectively avoid the most sensitive wetlands. We don't want to damage wetlands, but we're trying to actually protect them, of course, right? Obviously, your trail design would take that into consideration. You'd be looking at, you know, for the most part, around 80% of it or more would be a gravel filled with ensuring, you know, you put lots of pipe in there to ensure that toads and things like that can move, but also, most importantly, the water itself. And then we'd be looking at boardwalk for any of the most sensitive areas and mini spans that, you know, where there's a body of water that has to be crossed. There is only one and it's kind of two-thirds of the way down there, quite manageable. And so we're pretty excited about that. Habitat enhancements for species at risk. We really focused on little brown myotis bats and owls and the western toads. So what we're proposing is sort of a phased approach. We're going to base it on the science. We've been out there, had people collecting data and they're really excited about how this whole system kind of functions because essentially the bats, like, and the owls like to roost up in the old growth, but then they kind of come down and they use Oliver Lake and the wetlands further south as foraging habitat and kind of daytime habitat. And we can enhance that by creating more opportunity for them there by putting bat boxes in, all sorts of things. Along the foreshore of Oliver Lake, we'd be considering adding some large water debris and some plantings along select small portions only. Of course, you want to ensure that there's still access for people to go recreate on the lake safely and unencumbered. But that would add a lot of value to the habitat for those species. There's also invasive species removal itself. And that would be, most of it is thistle that is growing at two different sections along the BC Hydro line right away. We're also talking about two BC Hydro to see if that maybe should be their responsibility, but we won't get into that for now, that's fine. But we'd really want to focus on those. The invasives that you find around the parking lot, it'd be fighting, you know, that's like Buttercup and things like that. That's along every highway margin in all of Canada, I think. It's a losing battle, you're not going to get too far with that one. But we're really excited about this stuff with BC Hydro. Yeah, and then almost most importantly is the educational signage, both cultural and environmental signage, working with the nations on this sort of thing. So what's been done to date? We've been engaged with the nations on this particular project since March of 2025. We started out by obviously asking, you know, is this something that could be entertained? Is this of interest? And then really tried to build like a concept of what the whole thing kind of looked like. We reached out to the city of Prince Rupert Planning Department in July 2025. We've conducted two-site visits. We want to thank them for joining us on that. The nations joined us on that. PRPA's joined us on those site visits also. So we really, we're trying to build a real kind of community-driven consensus around this whole approach and what the design looks like. We have workshops ongoing for the past couple of months. We've been doing trail design workshops because we want to understand the width of the trail, the design, how it actually interacts with the landscape, where it should go. And we pulled in all our stakeholders to do that. We've completed that segment now, kind of waiting final feedback by the start of December here. And we're actually going to move on to the planning of the educational signage. So stakeholders, as I've mentioned a few of them already, Province of BC, BC Hydro, K and Trail Society. They've been very active in this community. They've been very, very supportive, working with us and we're trying to help support them as well. Hopefully, they can leverage the funds that we are putting into this for building other parts of the trail elsewhere, which is really exciting, so long as we meet certain criteria. And we're seeing if we can kind of get to there. But we're definitely trying to work with everyone to, you know, get the best bang for everybody's buck and support the local groups like that. We did receive conditional approval from PRPA on the concept. And I want to be really clear, PRPA has no jurisdiction for approving work on city-owned land nor in provincial land. It's the concept because they're our regulator for the wetland function compensation plan. So it doesn't allow us to do anything. It just allows us to move through the stage gate to say, hey, guys, we know our regulator is going to be okay with this if we can build the rest of the consensus around this. And we've also put in our application for land tenure to the Province of BC. They've been really great supporting us. That's probably a six-to-eight week process, sorry, six-to-eight month process. There's roughly a week process with BC Hydro to work with them along that power line. But it's not a, it's really just kind of a making sure that you are operated safely within a BC Hydro line right away as opposed to a can you do this or not? BC Hydro's really great working with recreational groups to advance this sort of thing across BC. They've been nothing but supportive. Great, excellent. So I wanted to kind of zero in a little bit more on the city fee sample parcel, which is in green here. So as you can see, the majority of this actually is all outside, the trail at least is outside of the city fee sample land. At the moment, our understanding from the planning department is that there's no protections or covenants on that land. You know, so that's something we would like to talk to the city about in the future. If this was to be something that the city supports in order to move that forward, these things can be relatively basic. They can also be complicated and we'll work them to make sure that, you know, we approach it the correct way. And what we're proposing to do is on the city land itself would be developing the trail, working collaboratively with the city and stakeholders. There'd be some habitat enhancement for starlist birds, bats, amphibians. Like you mentioned, Oliver Lake's outside of it, but the foreshore is in. You know, we'd want to make sure that people are channelized onto the existing, or the new trail we built so that there's not kind of a unmanaged and unregulated people going into the wetland like it is today, which impacts the wetland, right? Lots of dogs and people just trudging through that stuff and you're impacting the species that live there. So we just want to control that with some plantings or whatever, signage and enclosures. We're, yeah, all cost of development would be on Trigon. And then, of course, you know, our timeline runs to 2029 to have this piece of work done. And, you know, we're wanting to ensure that they, all costs of the ongoing maintenance over and above what the city currently pays on the area would be something that we ensure there's funding for. Trigon's happy to backstop that as, you know, Kristen has this community support fund, not support fund, I forgot the right term, sorry, investment fund, thank you. That's a great backstop, but there's lots of other really interesting opportunities. We're talking to folks like the BC Parks Foundation, who have a real interest in this sort of thing and they've got deep pockets to support it. And we're also working, like to talk to the cruise ship industry, not just about this trail, but perhaps helping support a lot of the other trails. You know, we recognize there's a lot of challenges to keeping all the trails open and maintained adequately in Prince Rupert. So perhaps this is something initiative we can push forward, that there's a modicum of support that comes from that industry towards this. So what we're proposing is new recreational infrastructure with no cost to the city out there at Oliver Lake. Next slide. And just wanted to walk you guys through our schedule. For 2025, we've been focused on valley identification, the priority fieldwork, right? You have scientists out there doing their work, collecting data, it's ongoing. Consensual planning with the nations. We engage with the nations at a minimum once a month on this and sometimes more because what we have once a month as a whole group and then we actually engage bilaterally with each nation separately from that meeting also, where we collect feedback constantly on this sort of thing. We've been very, you know, obviously we've had the field trips and we've been very open to meeting with them outside of those processes also. So 2026, detailed design permitting, initiating procurement. These permitting timelines are going to take a long time. Better not to plan to try and get any work done until you have certainty on this sort of thing. So, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, thinking about procurement, but really working through the processes to ensure that there's support behind what the plan looks like and that all permits and support and any work, you know, with any of the regulators or the landowners is sorted out. And then in 2027, we'd love to get into construction and give ourselves a couple of years to get through that. Prior to completing the project, we have to have our work done by May 2029. And then it would be turned over, most likely, to K and Trail Society to be the long-term stewards of that. And like we said, we'd ensure that the long-term funding is organized and in place prior to then. And so that's our quick introduction to what our concept is. And just wanted everyone in the city to be aware of it. And you don't take any questions you might have on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. Sounds like great, great project. So during the construction period, do you have any plans, like where do you hiring people, like local or outsourcing? Like what's your plan for that?
Well, for the most part, I mean, there's actually some amazing organizations that build these trails based in terrace, right? In terrace. And, you know, obviously there's all the materials would need to be bought locally, could be bought locally. I mean, it's gravel, it's gravel for the most part and local equipment that we'd renting to get out there and do the work. Yeah, exactly. You know, stuff like the large water debris, we can procure probably for free from PRPA and our own site. But, you know, we'd be looking to do all the work locally. We're not interested, it's not cost effective to bring someone up from outside of town, nor does it make any sense.
Councillor Adi.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. It's exciting stuff. I think, you know, it looks fabulous. One of the aspects of it that I really support is the notion of conservation and putting in protective covenants if we can. Because I think we're all aware, we're entering into a period of industrial development, industrial expansion, big industries as well as in smaller ways around housing. And I think there needs to be an awareness that every time you clear land to do something, something is lost. And I really like the idea that this will represent at least a small piece of preserving or creating a protected area because I think we need to develop, but we also need to protect. I think that's fabulous. I did have two questions, one of them you answered. I think your connection with the K and Trail Society suggests to me that this can be part and parcel of their work to complete the Cloudberry Trail because clearly was part of their sense of direction. And the other question I have is around the topography of the trail, which overhead. Google Maps photographs don't always show what you're actually walking on. And I'm no longer in my 30s and it matters quite a bit. So I'm curious about accessibility of the route that's been chosen for the trail and how accessible that would be for old folks and other folks with other considerations.
That's a great question. No, I appreciate that one. And I do want to confirm that we're obviously working with them to, we can't say it's building a section of their trail. We're obviously deviating from their exact trail that they had proposed, but we're working with them to ensure it would be part of the Cloudberry Trail. They wouldn't build it in addition to, if that makes sense, right? This would be a portion of it and we really want that, you know, we really want to support them to allow them to continue and build the rest of their trail. As you'd imagine, a wetland is a very flat place. And so we've lucked out of the entire Cloudberry alignment, but probably the flattest piece, which is also why it's the wettest piece. And so in terms of accessibility, the trail would be roughly 2.5 to 2.7 meters wide. And that's dictated primarily based on our conversations with the nations about what people felt was a human scale, that like, you know, not having too big a footprint into the wetland, but not so narrow that you can't get people passing each other wheelchairs down there and things like that. In terms of the maximum grade, we had ensured that we're below 6%. I think it's like it can be over 6% for a couple of meters, but really you're aiming for below 4%. And the whole trail can be built like that. And in terms of, you know, where you have interface of the gravel to the boardwalk, we can assure there's ramps there so that wheelchairs and folks with more limited mobility are able to actually use the trail. But it should be a very, very approachable, walkable piece of trail for almost anybody. There's not much elevational grade. I should have put up a little thing here, but basically from Oliver Lake, you can imagine it's fairly flat all the way until you get almost to the south, then it kind of dips down. Probably, I shouldn't have measured it recently, probably 30 feet, but over a long, long distance. And then you climb that back up over around 150, 200 feet up to the far side. But the alignments all been, we're working with the same folks that did the design of the first phase of Cloudberry. And so they have all the inputs and the models made for knowing exactly what max elevation you can achieve certain objectives. But we don't have the challenges that they faced when they built that first section where they had to go extra wide in places and they had to do blasting. We don't have bedrock near the surface, there's no blasting required. This is quite literally going to be building, you know, shovelfuls of gravel out there, compacting that in, ensuring you've got the water drainage to keep the wetland moving. And then when you get to the sensor area, building that boardwalk. It's quite straightforward relative to what they did in the first phase. The cost should, we'd get a lot more trail than they were able to do based on the challenges that they faced, if that's helpful.
Councillor Nish.
Thanks for your presentation and anything that anyone's willing to do and the city is not having to pay for it is always appreciated because we're spending our money on those things right there in front of you, pipes. The only question I had was like the actual area where most people like congregate there, like the picnic benches in that area, is there any plans to do anything improvements in that area too? Or is it just all just the trail?
We're, no, we're pretty open to doing work there. We didn't want to be presumptuous and assume that anybody wanted us to do work there. So, you know, working with the city planning department, I mean, I think it's, these things are on the table in my books. I think it'd be really great, you know, not just to have, you know, a destination there, but along the trail that there should also be a destination, you know, where there's, I mean, Jack at PRPA always joked that it's a pagoda or something like that, right? Like a boardwalk, somewhere to sit and get out of the rain, look at the view and just take it in and be out there. And so, you know, having that match with what's up at Oliver Lake and ensuring that that facility, that area is also, you know, in line with the whole thing and brought up speed would be great. You know, obviously, if you look closely around the Oliver Lake area, there's some old fire pits and things like that. And there's one thing we do definitely want to do is ensure that whatever is there, whether we're rebuilding picnic tables or whatnot. Right now, there's a whole bunch of erosion and that erosion goes into the Oliver Lake, right? And that sedimentation, that clogs fish gills and amphibian stuff, like it's not good for the environment. So if we can do whatever to stabilize that, that's definitely at a minimum something we would like to do because it's right up there with the habitat enhancements and it's really low hanging fruit.
Councillor Cunningham, I'm sorry, am I cutting you off? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks for the presentation, it's great. I've visited some of the restoration projects from the prairies where they've brought back the natural habitat that was totally destroyed over the years and that was great. And this is going to be an interesting project because there's some interesting habitat in that area. How your trail now, is it just going to be a gravel bed? Or is it going to actually be like grazed water or something like that?
Yeah, it'd be a mix. Yeah, it'd be a mix. The majority, roughly 80, 85% would be gravel because it's dry enough ground. It's not super, super wet. It's wetlandy, but it's not like, you know, down in the depression, near the south end of the trail, that's where you get like standing water and if you step in it, you know, even where it looks like ground, you know, you go up to your knee or deeper. That stuff, you don't want to start pouring stuff gravel in there. It's not good for, it's not, it's not helpful to the wetland itself. You build a boardwalk through that area. But where it's a lot drier up on the higher ends, you just get, it's well-suited to building it out of gravel. And yeah, as long as you've got enough drainage in there to ensure that the overland flow and the subsurface flow is able to move. And of course, you build it up on a pad, kind of like, you know, bigger material at the bottom, up to your finds at the top so that water can continue to move, not just where you have the pits themselves, right?
So the lower end of that is very, very swampy.
Sure is.
I've been in there a few times and you do sink up to your knees, trust me. So around the lake itself, it's not too bad. But with the rain we get in that, I can see it be problematic on some of the trail, but I'm quite sure you'll solve that problem.
But. Yeah, we had the benefit of not being the first to think of doing something like this. We've been able to reach out and talk to folks that have done trails like in similar climates. The most similar one we found recently was up in, down in Tavino. And they built that active transport corridor trail style right along that foreshore of that big open ocean. And they hit a ton of wetland in there. And they did a mixed kind of version also. I mean, theirs is over the top. I mean, it was also, you know, $25 million for a couple of kilometers. But, you know, there's lots of lessons learned there and, you know, it's a really small community. People building trails and it's not hard to reach out and get their lessons learned on how to do this. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to hire the professionals to actually do this, not just in terms of design, but actually come in and build it. It's not, you know, you're not going to hire the construction guy that go and build a road to go build something in a wetland, right? There's folks that are specifically trained and know how to build, you know, trails like this in terrace and in this sort of climate.
Okay, now that old saying, build it and they will come. Sometimes too many come.
Yeah.
So how are you going to like potentially your parking? You know, right now that parking lot is quite small. I'm expecting you're going to enhance it a bit. But, you know, like you, you look at Butsy or the other trails and all of a sudden, certain days, you can't even find a parking place there, they're along the highway and things like that. So potentially, how are you going to decide how much parking you need?
I mean, it's a great question. I think it's something we need to work with the city on to understand what they view the utilization as potentially being. It's also, it is the city's parking lot today. And then you butt yourself against MOE right away with the highway. So it's beyond us to kind of just say, we'll do X or Y. I think it's a conversation that we need to open up. Working with K and Trails, we did already open up the conversation. We know there's an unofficial parking lot at the corner of Ridley Island Road and Highway 16. I think probably everyone who's parked there at one point, I know I have. You know, and we want to, with everybody's safety in mind, you know, like it's not our place to develop that into a parking lot perhaps, but we want to certainly ensure that anyone using it is going to be able to travel across Ridley Island Road safely and not create an accident for themselves or the traffic and keep trucks and things like that. And so we've advised MOE that we're planning, we're thinking about doing this. And they're working with us to ensure that like a crosswalk gets put in there. You know, so that, you know, the unintended consequences that can be almost expected, right? Can be managed for. So, you know, I think it's a great question. I would love if this was so popular, got to the point where parking was an issue. But then, of course, that's a problem we have to deal with, of course. But I think that's something we can talk to the city about and the planning department. Um, but I think that's something we can talk to the city about and the planning department and MOE and get a better sense of what options there are.
And, yeah, and PRPA with the cruise ship industry and that and, you know. People now becoming more and more aware of what's around the city, not just in the city.
Yeah.
And that, this would be a great selling point for people coming off the ship sometimes.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I've been up here, coming here, not living up here. I've been coming up here for ten years. I originally helped support, build the rapid project. Or do all the regulatory on that thing. So I've been using the trails here for, for a decade now. And, you know, it, it is really striking to me that you go out on the Butsy Rapids sometimes now, and, you know, the, the bus pulls up and people pour out and they. They go and they, they get to go recreate and do all that stuff. It's fantastic. But, um, but certainly in a situation where there's a, you know. A, a lack of funds to kind of maintain these trails, perhaps the, that it, it doesn't need to be owners to the point where it, you know, disincentivizes people to come, but. Even a small contribution from every person coming and using those trails or the, or the organizations that support them or the cruise ship or PRPA. Would go a long way in keeping not just the trail we're proposing open, but all the other ones.
Well, let PRPA know that you think they should contribute.
They already know I'm thinking about that.
We're trying to get them to contribute a lot.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. I, we really appreciate your time this evening.